This is a regular city council meeting of the City of Ocean Shores. It's February 11th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. The meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. The meetings are simulcast and archived by KOSW Radio. Meetings are live streamed with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. The meetings can be viewed on Cable Channel 68, Thursdays at 12:00 PM and Sundays at 10:00 AM. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Sires?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Lisa, can you lead us in the...
Can we have a motion to excuse?
I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Lisa Gribble.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, can we have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice whereon.
We have approval of the meeting agenda.
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. We have no ceremonies or proclamations today. We do have three vacancies on the Parks Board and two vacancies on the Lodging Tax Advisory Next up, we have our public communication. Public communication in the council is attended for communication to the city council regarding general council business or policy not on tonight's agenda. Address comments or questions to the city council body, not an individual member or city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We ask that the comments be nice and respectful. This is not a question and answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use the public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. The city council will begin the time once the citizen has started their public comment. At two minutes, you will see a green light, followed by a yellow light indicating 30 seconds remain of the public comment period. The red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be first individuals in attendance. Second will be individuals attending remotely. Three, here, the general public comment, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the same usual position on the agenda. So, we have public comment?
Yep. Good evening. We have three this evening. First, Jan Hyatt, Super Bowl.
Hi, Jan Hyatt, Ocean Shores, and it's Super Bowl. And I just want to compliment several people around here. One of them is the Community Engagement Committee that put this on. Second was the convention staff. I don't know where George went, but him and his staff here did a very good job. And third, I'd like to thank the city and some of the council people for coming over and some of the employees for coming over and supporting this activity. It was a well-planned, lots of TVs that you could see, excellent food, and very nice people that showed up. And I think, I'm pretty sure, we all had a good time. And I just would like to, again, compliment the city for helping put this together, supporting it, and for the Community Engagement Committee. They really did a nice job, and hopefully we'll do it next year. And invite kids. We had lots of activities there for young people. So, next year, I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Kurt Driving on the beach.
Kurt Saru, Ocean Shores. I apologize for not making the last meeting, but I wanted to make it a point of coming to this one and stating that I've been on the beach almost every day for about the past month now. And it seems that the amount of drivers that are coming, and they're visitors, they're obviously visitors, they're coming to the beach for having a good time. We get that. But it seems to me like it's an increase in people speeding, reckless driving, doing donuts on the beach, driving in the clam beds, and driving in the dunes, which none of the above should be happening. But I don't see a whole lot of beach patrol action. I know it's kind of the off-season, but I'm concerned that as the weather improves, that the situation's going to get worse if we don't put kibosh to it now. But that's what I had to say.
Debbie B., thank you.
Debbie B., Ocean Shores resident, mayor, council, citizens. I'm going to reiterate what Jan said. Thank you so much. I'm part of City Engagement Committee, and we had a really good time putting this soup herb bowl together. We had eight different soups for people to taste and try and vote on, and we had three top winners. We had a super fan, Ms. Allison Klein up there. She won a prize as well. We had 120 people, which was up over 30 people from last year's Super Bowl. And like Jan said, three screens, lots of games for kids. So, next year, come decorate your table, bring your friends and family, and enjoy us for a great time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes public comment unless there's any online. Sarah, nothing? Okay. That concludes public comment.
All right, thanks. So, next up, we got staff report, and that will be Scott Anderson.
All right. Good evening. This is a special report that is primarily, almost everything on it is to deal with erosion and things that we are doing within the city and working with external partners to combat and mitigate that process. So, I wanted to give everyone, the first thing I'll do, a quick update on the Marine View Drive jetty. This is just letting you know, the city actually believes that final construction will be completed by the end of this weekend. That will mean the berm will run from all along Neptune, all the way down to the Quinault Marina and RV Park, and it will tie in there to the relic jetty. To date, the city has received two different grants, one of $350,000 from the Washington State Department of Commerce and an addendum grant based on the scope and scale of our activities from the Department of Commerce for the amount of $338,000. So, a total of $688,000 to complete this berm. And remember, this is just a sort of phase one. This is designed to get us through a season while we contemplate and we're working with engineers to build a more permanent, stable structure. So, this, it will be completed, we hope, by this weekend. Then, moving along, and this will relate to our council item agenda number seven, just a brief update and also just a little background information on both Peninsula Court and Mariner Court and what it is we're doing with the emergency proclamation and why. So, residents at Peninsula Court, as a result of the emergency proclamation that we'll be talking about shortly, they are seeking to do something very similar and build a private dynamic revetment berm that will save their property at that location. There has been, there's some severe erosion there in your council packets. You can see that on pages 37, 39, and 41. You will see what's happening to that, and it's partly because many neighbors got in their permits for hard armoring well before the new ecology and shoreline regulations came into place. And those people who do not have a berm out in front of their house or hard armoring, it's, you know, the water will go wherever the rocks aren't, and so it's eating up and cutting into their property. So, despite the emergency, and this also is city land there as well, the bulkhead will be private. It will be paid for by the homeowners, although the city does maintain a private access point at that area, and we have stairs down to that. So, despite the emergency on both the public and private land at that location, it will require that Ocean Shores City Planner Marshall Reed help facilitate all of the permitting process for all parties involved. Because if there's one thing we sort of have learned from the original berm, it's if there's any weak spots in the chain, it simply will eat through those weak spots and come around the backside of the water. So, we're looking to prevent that. It's not quite as pervasive as what we see on the Southern Bay side and what we would see on the ocean side, but in large storms, we definitely lose land there. On Mariner Court, situation is somewhat similar to the one at Peninsula Court. In this case, the city, there is private property on two sections, and then the city property is right in the middle. So, the city is going to allow property owners a right-of-way permit that will protect both the private property and the city property at those locations. This will also have a dynamic revetment berm placed on it at no cost to the city, but that structure, when paid for and built, will protect our collapsing cul-de-sac at Mariner Court. And there is, not significant, but there is city infrastructure at that location. For this purpose, the city has set aside $50,000, and that is almost overwhelmingly to help facilitate the permitting process that will be required to finalize this project. We don't anticipate it will really cost $50,000, but we want to keep that as our placeholder in case because it will have to go through both the ecology process and because it's going to be shoreline, it will have to go through the Army Corps of Engineers as well. So, that is what we're going to be discussing later tonight. And then, there's another issue that I wanted to bring to council's attention, which the city clerk's office sent out today, and that is our request for support for our Cooperative Technical Partnership Grant from FEMA. For those who do not know the backstory, the City of Ocean Shores and the City of Westport are, have partnered together, and we've brought in the county in a quest to both obtain funding to help mitigate our erosion issues and to help with, get help with permitting for those things. We have a wonderful map here, which I wish I should have shown everyone. It is a map of areas that we've identified within Ocean Shores that are prone to erosion. And you will see that Area 9 is an area that, we actually won't see it, but you can see it online, that Area 9 is exactly where both Mariner Court and Peninsula Court are, and Area 8 is where we're building the berm on the south end. So, what we are asking for, the Cooperative Technical Partnership Grant will allow us to access money via FEMA. And the thought behind this was if the cities go in together, the two large cities in Gray's Harbor go in together, we partner and we bring in the county, which is what we're doing, they can create a process where the county can act as our sort of lobbying agency for both cities, since it's imperative that we kind of move forward together on this. And they already sort of have a guideline, guidance and oversight plan that will involve the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and involve the Quinault Indian Nation. It will involve the Shoal Water Tribe, Port of Gray's Harbor. We're bringing in Washington Sea Grant, the Department of Ecology, our Washington State legislators, and of course, the both cities of Ocean Shores and Westport. And the whole idea is to connect these partners together and create something that's holistic that rather than Ocean Shores just going to the legislature and asking for money, we're all doing it collaboratively, and hence the greater chance of success for that. So, we are sending, we sent out a letter today. I guess I can read it in whole, as long as my voice holds with me, because for whatever reason, still not all together, perfect. But the City of Ocean Shores and the City of Westport, Washington would like to commend Gray's Harbor County and its Board of County Commissioners for their willingness and leadership in preparing and submitting a fiscal year 25 FEMA Cooperative Technical Partnership Grant to develop a regional coastal resiliency strategy. Only through developing a larger holistic strategy will coastal county jurisdictions be able to meet the regional challenges their communities face from shoreline erosion, shoreline retreat, sea level rise, storm surge, kingsides, atmospheric rivers, and coastal flooding. I won't read the rest because it is in your packets or it has been sent out to you, and it will be a public record document. But this is what we're doing, is partnering cities. We think the county has a great capacity to sort of lead this, and they have already assigned a gentleman, Scott Bedeker, who is going to be going through all of the past plans, studies, and erosion projects. And it's a list of about 15 or so that have been done by the county, by the Army Corps of Engineers, by FEMA, by the City of Ocean Shores, by the City of Westport. And we'll be combing through all of these in order to create sort of a master document, a master process that will afford a pathway for what we need to do in order to preserve our shoreline and to mitigate coastal erosion in Gray's Harbor. So, that is really what we're on tonight, and we will probably discuss this more on item seven, but that concludes my city administrator report. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Council liaison reports and committee reports. Start with Rich.
I had no liaison meetings, but I did Zoom the town hall on the waterways, and that was, that was a great presentation she made for us.
Thanks. Denise?
I also attended the Fresh Waterways Town Hall and was simply amazed at the amount of information that we gathered from it. It also made me realize how well-spent our money was in these consultants. I also did not have any liaison meetings. I have a finance and public works upcoming.
Thanks. Allison?
I signed warrants, and I also attended the town hall meeting, and it was a lot of great information that she gave us, but what really surprised me is how much better off our waterways are now than they were in the 90s when the study was done. So, we're making progress.
Thanks. Lisa Scott?
I will have a golf course report for you at the next meeting. Trune had some change in staff at the financial level, so I will have a more in-depth report, as I mentioned, next meeting. I attended agenda setting. I have library board tomorrow, and that's it.
All right, thanks. Tom? All right. Richard?
I signed warrants. I attended the public hearing regarding the Moby Dick properties purchased, and we hope to hear something back from that shortly. I think that that's going to be a great thing for the city. Why would we want to let all of those buildings go into dry rot when somebody wants to rejuvenate them and make a functional operation and add 40 to 60 parking spaces downtown? It's a win for the city. I also attended the Herrera Waterways mid-study, the mid-study out briefing, and as the other council members have said, wow, blew my socks off. I thought I knew a lot about the waterways, and it was just an eye-opener, probably the best presentation that I've heard since the nine years I've been here. And if you're interested in that report, the North Beach TV has a great video of it, so worth watching. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Richard. All right, so I'll touch on the town hall a little bit. Herrera is the company that we hired, and I too share the same feelings as the council. It was very detailed, and please go to Cable 68 and watch that if you weren't able to be here for the meeting. It was really well done. We are going to start up our Fresh Waterways Advisory Board, and so we have seven positions open right now. So, if you'd like to be involved with that, please fill out an application, turn it into Nicole. There's some, for those of you here, there's some on the counter outside. So, please do that. She's kind of by where the permit office is, so if you go into the permit office, you can drop them off on the counter, and then we'll get your application in a call. Another thing that we got organized, thanks to Scott, the state lien program, we're going to get started on our purchasing practices, and that is going to help the city be a lot more efficient in that department. So, that'll be starting up here shortly. And that's all I have for my report. Consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. No old business, new business. We got a ratification of a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, declaring a citywide emergency to implement measures to mitigate severe erosion damage in the areas of Mariner Court Southeast and the Peninsula Court Southeast and Ocean Shores, Washington. And Scott pretty much filled everybody in on what's going on out there, and you have pictures of what it looks like. Scott and I were out there to look at it, and those are actually Scott's pictures that you're getting to look at. So, I guess we can take some public comment, if we have any on that. No public comment, all right? Tom, council, any questions or comments? Yes, Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ratification of a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, declaring a citywide emergency to implement measures to mitigate severe erosion damage in the areas of Mariner Court Southeast and Peninsula Court Southeast and Ocean Shores, Washington.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, a resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, establishing impress accounts, appointing custodian for the account, establishing the amount of monies to be on deposit in each account, and rescinding prior resolution establishing and setting amount of such accounts. And that's going to be presented by our finance director, Sarah Logan.
Good evening. So, what we have is a resolution, and this has to do with anything that's considered petty cash within the city. And it gives a clear and concise place and who takes ownership of those funds for different departments, something to recognize when they say impress accounts and petty cash. Our cash drawer and utility billing that is utilized to take deposit or give change back is considered petty cash or an impressed account. As the mayor and the finance department has kind of worked their way through the city to find better ways of doing things, and then the departments have also worked together, it's been noticed that there's several places throughout the city that those monies no longer needed to be. For example, we had at the fire department $100, and then attached to the EMS, we had $600. This was often for things that they'd need after everybody was gone prior to use of credit cards or IGA funds or anything like that. They also used the fire department money to give change for burn permits. Those burn permits are now available on CitizenServe and can be processed that way, or if there is cash, which we are definitely trying to get away from, they could go to the permit office itself. So, there was no longer a reason to have those two. The city clerk public records office had petty cash specifically for taking in or giving back money regarding public records requests when we were down at the James Building where the mayor and city administrator are now. Since we are all down at this side of the city, we have the utility billing that just receipts that money on our behalf, so there was no reason to have those funds any longer. So, this is just updating the resolution so that the council and community could see where we actually do have funds and where we no longer need them.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any, council. Any questions or comments? Yes, Lisa?
I just would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing Resolution Number 516 and replacing with Resolution Number 500 to update the small works roster process. I'm in the wrong one. Sorry, I crossed it off my list. I apologize. I just was realizing that. A resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, establishing impress accounts, appointing custodians for the accounts, establishing the amount of monies to be on deposit in each account, and rescinding prior resolutions establishing and setting amounts of such accounts.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Let's see, you already read nine. So, number nine, a resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing Resolution Number 516 and replacing Resolution Number 500 to update, to update the small works roster, vendor list limits, and removing the limited public works process. And that's presented by Finance Director Sarah Logan.
So, this is just another resolution cleanup. The council cleaned, as of July of 2024, there was House Bill 1621, which you all saw the changes for that in our purchasing policy that we did in 2024. We have, through our city, several ordinances and several resolutions, and we're just trying to clean all of those up. A to match, even though a resolution's a guideline, it should flow with whatever policy we have in place that the council has approved. We had two previous resolutions that spoke of various purchasing policies. Those were both included in your packet, and instead of updating one and repealing another and marking this one up and calling it something else, we just rewrote it and put a new one with our new purchasing policy. Things, as you know, we got rid of the limited liability. The mayor chose not to go up on the authority levels that he actually could have. He met in the middle, you know that. This resolution matches that purchasing policy and in, should have been brought at the same time, and I was unaware, so we're bringing it now.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? I don't see any. Council, any questions or comments? Richard?
I would like to make a motion to pass the resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, repealing Resolution Number 516 and replacing Resolutions Number 500 to update the small works roster process, vendor list limits, and removing the limited public works process.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we got a resolution of the city council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, adopting revised city council guidelines and procedures, and this will be presented by Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Sires. Who wants to go first?
I'll start this off.
All right, thank you, Allison.
So, this has been a work in progress for about a year now, that our ad hoc committee, we worked on ethics, we got that passed and approved, and then we moved on to guidelines. And what we have done is we looked at several cities and their guidelines, and we chose certain parts to put into ours. And so, some of the things that, it's quite a big packet, but one of the things we are removing from the guidelines is that the future projects, because when council in 2024, I believe, said that now that we have agenda setting, any items for the agenda would go on there for discussion instead of having a future projects list for discussion at the end of each meeting. Other things that we put in here, making sure the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. We also have for the public communication, and we took the language that had been used in other cities as well as what we are using now, and how to handle telephone mail and email. And some of the other new pieces that we added in was the sign-in sheet, and that those are pulled five minutes before the beginning of the meeting and given to the city administrator, and how the meeting, council meeting remote comment, that they will send an email to the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting, so that they're able to be prepared and have everything ready for anyone who is online. And then, another thing that we added is that if someone signs up to speak on an agenda item, and then that item is removed from the agenda, if we amend it, that that individual will be allowed to speak on that topic during regular public comment. We have information on council guidelines, and then one of the other pieces that we did changes with our ad hoc committees, that that is two to three council members for a specific task or objective. There may be a committee formed, that community members will also be appointed to serve on an ad hoc committee, just like the one that we have for ethics and doing these guidelines. Is, there will be some that come up that will have community members. And then we added some language for our standing committees. We did remove the council code of ethics, which had been in the guidelines previously because that is a separate document. And liaison job descriptions, we've... And Leah's on job descriptions we've added, and this was all, all the council members got it, and I don't want to sit here and read this whole, you know, 12-page document. But we did receive some questions, so I am going to let Councilmember Sires start. And because we thought, well, if maybe one person had questions, other people may have. I believe that all of the questions were forwarded to members of council, and we have some answers for those. So you want to start off?
Sure. The first question that we had was related to the election of the mayor pro tem. It says in our guidelines that a mayor pro tem is elected when there is a new council, and we were asked to define what a new council is. Let me just add that many of these questions that came to us were from the previous document that we did not change at all. So that is really a first question, and I'm not sure. Lisa, can you address what a new council means?
Nope, I have no clue. Less it's more, it's less it's four or more.
Well, when we were discussing it, we talked about a new council forming as part of an election cycle.
Yeah, but four or more new council members, that would be a new to me, but I don't know, that's a good question.
With the cycle that we have, we have, what, four in one year and then three?
Three in.
And then so what we were thinking with that is it would go with the election cycles. After the next election, then in that following January, do elect a mayor pro tem.
Sarah, did you have something?
Yes. That's why we always did, every two years. So there's a mayor pro tem in place for two years, and at the first meeting in January, they got elected, because that's after a council election.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay, so I think the question there is whether we need to change that wording. It doesn't seem to me like we do.
I don't think so.
The next question that we had was related to future projects. And we took the future projects out, because as Allison said, we had discussed this actually at a council retreat, that there was no point in having project, future projects on there every single agenda, that it was simply taking up time and a review. But given that any council member can add to the agenda, and that every council member at some point is on agenda review, we felt that it simply was not needed. Any reaction to that from council?
Okay, we'll just wait till we finish all of them.
Okay. Richard, can you wait?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, the next one was addition of items to city council agenda by citizens that they thought had occurred twice. What it is, it's set up with agenda items and with comment as it relates to items on the agenda. The second time it's mentioned is for items not on the agenda. So we have two types of public comments. We have for people, when you sign up, that you just want to make a comment on something, and then the second one we talk about is things that are on the agenda. And then it was asking how citizens can request an item to be placed. Who is a citizen? Does that mean only people that these guidelines are for people who live full-time? And citizen was not defined in previous versions, so it's a new issue. We can use individual or defined citizen as someone who lives, works, owns property, or visits Ocean Shores.
There was also a question as to why we list a phone number for people to call if they would like to get something on the agenda. When the committee discussed this, we realized that not everybody is tech savvy and will submit something online. The question was that what will happen if this phone number changes? And if someone does call that phone number, they get a phone tree. Our thought was that we have gotten a new phone system, that the phone numbers for the city have been stable. If a phone number does change, there is usually a way to forward to the new number until this document can be updated. And as far as there being a phone tree and no instructions as to how to navigate the phone tree in this, we felt that anyone who called the city when they explained what they wanted would be able to be forwarded by the city employee.
So our next question was, what happens after a citizen makes the request? Does it automatically go on, or what is the process? And we did talk about this and said we should add that agenda requests to the city clerk are then considered by the Agenda Review Committee, and that's who would make the decision whether or not the item goes on there. And the public comment, we addressed where if there is something on the agenda and you have signed up to make public comment, and then that item is removed, you can still make it under general public comment, because we've had that happen a few times. So we wanted to give people the opportunity to speak on an item even if we had removed it. Ad hoc committee, three standing committees, there are four committees, Public Works, Finance, Public Safety, and Ethics. We can take out the number of standing committees, so we only have to edit the names at the end when and if they change. So just take out the three standing committees and just have the wording standing committees.
The next question was related to the process for a council member replacement, and there were some changes that were suggested. However, what we have in the document here is the exact process that is used by the city clerk. So if there are any changes, they should go to that process rather than what's in this document, because this document reflects what actually does happen. And the next question was related to appointments for the Ethics Committee. The ethics document is separate from this now, and some of the detailed procedures that are requested will be handled when the procedures for the Ethics Committee are completed.
Is there any public comment?
I want to make one comment, just for the record, that Lisa Gribble was back here at 6:30. Thank you. And we can have public comment.
Evening, Jane Shattuck, Ocean Shores resident. And it won't be three minutes. Just to one of the questions that was brought up about a citizen wanting something put on the agenda. I like the agenda review idea, but also that if it is put on there, that it's put on as a discussion item, so council can discuss whether they want to put it on the agenda as an item also. So that was my only comment.
All right, do we have any other public comment? Not seeing any. Richard, I know you had a question.
So actually, I have several, but I'll start with the first one. I am still unclear about how council members get what they want on the agenda to the agenda. So there's an agenda setting committee, and I'm on that when it's my turn, but that comes around every, what, two and a half or three months?
Okay, so if there's some, for example, I wanted to get this guidelines on the agenda. I was not on agenda setting. I contacted the mayor pro tem and said, I would like this on the agenda. If we want something added to the agenda, we can contact the mayor pro tem or the city clerk to get it on for Agenda Review Committee.
So I think that that's great, and I think that that should be published in this document, so there's no question that we all understand and we all see it in writing.
All right. Lisa.
I just wanted to add that, you know, beside the phone number, maybe it should also say to email the mayor pro tem as well as a source, just because that will change every two years. But the mayor pro tem is on every single agenda setting, so that's also a means for the mayor pro tem to connect with city staff as well.
And if you're going to make a modification to it in that way, if you could add that it requires Agenda Review consensus, because that's the big difference, is that just because a council member sends it to the mayor pro tem and it's brought up, we still have to. And even if the city wants to add something, we have to find at least two members of the agenda review to add it after the fact. So I think that gets a little muddy, and it'd be helpful if it was in there.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, Richard?
So like I said, I've got a few. The explanation of what constitutes a new council makes absolute sense, but it's not defined. And so if it's defined, and I just moved here three weeks ago, six weeks ago, and this is the first time on my council that I'm attending a council, I don't know what that process is, and if it's defined, now I know.
Every election? Yeah.
Every two years with an election cycle, maybe? No, but they just said that we, the mayor pro tem sits for two years, and then the council elects another one, and it usually falls every two years on an election cycle.
But it's been following the election cycle when there's been four council members elected?
No.
Well, last year.
Well, I get that, but I think it is with every, I don't, I think it's a new council meaning, I don't, because you could not have any turnover, and it's not a new council. But I think that you're electing a mayor pro tem every two years based on the election cycles. So like the next year, there'll be a new mayor pro tem, because there will be an election. And then two years, the four that were just elected, there'll be another one. So I think it's every two years on an election cycle.
Yes, go ahead. So again, the explanation makes perfect sense, but it's not defined. And so every four years, and the operative here is even though those, some of those four newly elected may still be on the council, they are newly elected, and so it is essentially a new council, because they are newly.
That's why we're saying we'll do it on the election cycle.
And, yeah, and that makes it every two years, not four years, Richard.
I, thank you.
Got another one?
The, oh, so this got one of the council members in a whole lot of, a whole heap of trouble. When specifically are the applications for an appointment? When specifically are they released to the public? Because what this document says is the Friday before, and that cost me $7,500. So when specifically are those documents to be released?
Sarah, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, sure. It does not matter what any document says. If you are running for a public office, whether it's for appointment or elected, it is a matter of public record. So immediately, it is a available document that I have to provide through the city.
So, amen, and that's not what this says.
I would tend to agree with Councilmember Wills. I don't think that we should have any particular release date. And I also would ask the council to add that RCW into this document that's very clearly laid out in other documents, because it is not like a board. It is not, you know, one of our boards that we have. It is a public elected office, and it is under totally different provisions, and it's what I fought. I got attacked personally for it. So I think it would be very helpful for it to be in there, the public disclosure part, and I'd be happy to provide that to you.
That was my next question.
All right, thanks. Yes, Richard?
Make sure I have this thought organized. First, I commend the ad hoc committee that put this together. I think that you guys did a whole lot of work to it, and it has the bones of a really sound document. I'm not willing to pass this tonight, because I think that there are enough changes that need to be in writing and clarified, so that there's never any question in the future. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Would you guys like to bring it back next meeting?
Yeah, what we'll do, because I want to get the stuff from Sarah to put in there, so we have the right wording, and then the couple things that Councilmember Sires and I had talked about, and some other suggestions. And so we will bring it back to take a vote on it at our next meeting, because this has been going on for well over a year, and we kind of want to wrap it up. But on that note, I would love to thank the members of this committee, Jane Shattuck, Rick Beveridge, Joe DeVore, Councilmember Sires, Sarah Logan, who are city clerk slash Finance Director, and our mayor pro tem, Lisa Scott, who put in a lot of time and effort and work on these two documents.
All right, thanks. So we'll, yes, Lisa Gribble.
Thank you, and I loved all the answers to the questions. I appreciate that very much. I had just one question, though, and that's the process for public comment, the letter F, that you, it was a question, and then you addressed the answer. It was if someone signs up to speak on an agenda item, but I don't think we sign up to speak on agenda items. We only sign up to speak for public comment, so that's why that one kind of confused me.
Yeah.
So that's why, because if you were signing up for an agenda item, and then during agenda approval, it got taken off, then how would you get back to sign up for public comment? Because those are already up here with the, to start the meeting with. So that was the one I thought might need some clarity.
Yeah, we talked about adding some more verbiage to that, to define it a little more clearly.
All right, we'll move on to the next one, bring that back next meeting. A request to the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, providing the purchase and installation of carpet at the Ocean Shores Convention Center to Shaw Industries Incorporated. This will be presented by Finance Director Sarah Logan.
I'm not sure why, but here we are. So the convention center's carpet has been in here since 2005. They've done an excellent job maintaining it. The reason that they were able to maintain it is when they purchased it in 2005, it came with several squares, as you'll see, where they are able to replace them when something has gone past its capacity of being able to be shampooed. It's old, it, we're out of squares, and it's at the point where it needed to be replaced. In 2024, the LTAC Committee and the City Council allocated $95,000 for this project. During the budget season, we were able to obtain the other $45,000. When George went back to get the carpet quote, it was at $131,191.96. At this time, we have $140,000 budgeted, so it comes in under budget, and the fund number was available for the city council in the agenda bill. And a picture of what the carpet would look like was also provided. And the little bit of extra, because I know, I'm pretty sure Councilmember Hartman would ask, they are getting 35 boxes with 10 squares per box past what they need for the future changeouts that they might have to have. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? All right, not seeing any. Counsel, any questions or comments? Yes, Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, approving the purchase and installation of a carpet at the Ocean Shores Convention Center to Shaw Industries Incorporated.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have a discussion going to be led by Mayor Pro Tem Lisa Scott about city council chats.
Hello. So we're talking about bringing back city council chats. It's been a while. Are any of you up here familiar with the chat format? Okay. So we've picked five dates for this year. They're all on Thursdays from 6:00 to 7:30. Not all of us need to be there, just three council members. We have February 27th, April 24th. have February 27th, April 24th, May 22nd, September 25th, and October 23rd. So, I need three guinea pigs here that are willing to step up for the 27th. Richard? Denise?
In general, any Thursday works for me, so, but I, can you email those dates, so I can put them in my calendar?
Yep.
But, and I'll go look at my 27th right now.
Okay, I will, I will email those out, but for those that don't know what it is, it's at the Convention Center, there's three council members that attend, and it's just an open dialogue with the public. So, you get to ask us questions. I'm sure all the questions asked, we might not know the answers directly, but we can definitely get them. It's just a chance to interact with different council members throughout the year, and to ask direct questions and have a di, open dialogue. Richard?
So, February 27, you said, correct?
Yep.
And that is also the Finance Committee date, if I have it correct, and the Finance Committee, will we be out in time to be able to be here in time?
I hope so. I mean, we, we, yeah, we can. If we have to set up another Finance Committee too, that's fine, too. So, we'll work that day, and if we need more, we'll schedule another day. Not a big deal.
So, I'm willing to be one of the three.
Okay, and I have Denise. Is there anybody else? Okay, Tom. So, those will be the three for February 27th. So, what I will do, because that one's coming up real quick, I will email the rest of the council, the dates, have you guys jump in, choose what dates you might be willing to attend.
Richard?
I have a question on the procedures. If a fourth council member showed up, but was in the audience just listening, then Sarah, that would not constitute a quorum, and so there's no issues I'm asking.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, it's also still a public meeting.
But it doesn't require the notification that a council meeting requires?
No, as long as the other members don't engage in the dialogue directly, you're fine.
So, then, that begs another question. I just thought, if I was out in the audience and wanted to ask a question as a citizen, would I be crossing that boundary?
Somebody might throw a microphone at you.
You're always a council member.
Yep.
And again, it's, I, I, there's a preciseness sometimes in my thinking that just needs to be nailed down, and that's all I'm doing. Thank you.
Maybe don't attend when you're not on the daisies.
All right, so, are we done with that?
I'll send an email out tomorrow with those dates for the remaining four meetings. Also, just a reminder of the three who signed up, and then I look forward to your emails back.
All right, so, next, we got an executive session. We will move on to the next order of business, and that is the executive session. And that will start here at 6:52. I'm thinking 10 minutes should take care of it, so we'll be back at 7:02, hopefully. Executive session will be that portion of the meeting that is governing body to consider the minimum price in which real estate will be offered for sale or lease, when a public knowledge regarding such consideration would likely cause a decrease in price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public, RCW 42.30.1101C. So, do we have that room set up, Sarah? All right.
Council has extended executive session by five minutes.
Oh, given, that's a guarantee.
So, how do you feel after the game?
No, I mean, I'm talking about that part of it.
All right, we're back in session. There'll be no council action. So, next, we have Agenda Review, and that will be Councilmember Scott, Hartman, and Klein, and it'll be Thursday, February 13th at 9:00 a.m. Now, we have good of the order, and we'll start at the other end. Richard?
Give me just, well, what I really wanted to say is, is a couple of things. The Harry and, no, the Moby Dick property, I have heard a lot of people a little bit grumpy about that property. Do we want a food bank downtown? Well, I don't, I'm not sure that everybody realizes that if that transaction goes through, that the city will gain 40 or 50 parking spaces five or six days a week, and those buildings that are currently on the verge of going into disrepair and dry rot will be spruced up and fixed, and I would much rather have those nice buildings in that parking lot than have a pile of dry rotted things that need to be abated. The other thing that I wanted to say to the council members is I have put together a, it's actually a spreadsheet that lists every council agenda item for '24, and I'm into '25, and what it does is it creates a good table of contents if we ever want to look up, what did we do when? If you want that, if you want a copy of it, email me, and I will be happy to email that spreadsheet to you. And if you don't, it's good for me, because I like to know, how much did we allocate, and when did we do that? So, that's all I've got to say.
All right, thanks. Tom?
Well, anybody who was thought at the game and was voting on, or rooting for the person, team that lost, I'm sorry. Okay?
Who played?
Who played?
I just don't want to see more when you get to that.
But you guys did a great job with that, so, thank you very much.
All right, Lisa Gribble?
Thank you, and while I did not attend the Super Bowl party, I heard so many great things about it, and I just wanted to thank our Community Engagement Committee for putting that on. That was pretty awesome. So, lots of great feedback about how great that event went. And I was not present at the town hall, but I watched the water quality-
They were both fairly new in the community and they found it as an opportunity to meet other people, but also to be surprised and delighted that our community put together a positive event. I also wanted to thank Nicole and Sandy for the webpage and the, the new document center. I've already used it and having been in web services, I know how time consuming and difficult it can be transferring documents and setting up a new site. So thank you.
All right, thanks. Rich?
So I heard after that party, is it true the Community Engagement Committee has asked for 400-inch TVs for next year's party? Is that, just kidding. I, I want to take a minute to thank the mayor and the administration for working with the homeowners over on Mariner Court and Peninsula. It's been years in the making, the erosion over there, it's been torturous for all concerned and I'm just, it must be satisfying to you all too to finally get it off your plate and start working towards a, a great public-private partnership. And so I want to thank you for that. I know you guys are also working on the dunes, trying to, trying to make sure we stay safe with our homeowners and hotels and work on trying to eliminate the fire danger and maybe we get some views out of it too, but thanks guys.
All right, thanks. Anybody want to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we're adjourned.